It is gone to order.
Thank you.
We invite the audience to stand with us.
Yes.
At this time, we'll have a few minutes so those that enjoyed prayer or centering into the meeting, so be it. So we'll have a silence and after that, the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Noonan?
Here.
Yoder?
Here.
Hubble? Lotner?
Present. I think Mr. Hubble's here, I think, somewhere.
Who?
I sound polite, so, okay.
Well, he'll appear.
Okay.
Lotner's here. Lotner, Lotner, here.
Present.
Okay, thank you. Lukamsky?
Here.
McCullough?
Here.
Miller? Nixon?
Here.
Winkelman?
Present.
Walter? We have four of them, so we can move on ahead. We're going to look at the agenda to begin with, and as we look at that, see, perchance, there's any conflict of interest.
Mr. Chairman, I know that we accept the agenda as written.
Second.
Thank you. Shall we vote? For those in favor, again, if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? By that implication, in a conflict of interest where there's none. Okay. Public comment. At this time, we have public comment, and in general, we like the comments to not be too lengthy, so maybe I suggest that we have a five-minute maximum for a public comment per individual. And we will also have a public comment at the end of the meeting, and I would also entertain, John Perry, if we must, we have a motion before we act on it, I would allow further public comments, although those at the time should be very, very brief, otherwise we forget what the motion was. So, public comments? Yes, please identify your name by name, and then I'll start you off.
My name is Jack Kelly. Address is 10-100 East 7, L.A., in Traverse City, Michigan, 49684. I know that you perhaps received some documentation, lengthy documentation, that I provided to last minute. Apologize for that. There was a little miscommunication between myself and Trudy, but you may find it parts of it of interest, and you may want to refer to parts of it. I am here this evening to speak in opposition to the Elmwood Township Conditional Res zoning, R1 to NC, Item A, on our new business. This matter went before the Elmwood Township Planning Commission on the 15th of January 2019. Five members were present. The unanimous decision of the planning commission at that time was to recommend denial to the Township Board. It then came up here. Meeting took place on 26th of February, and you had a lot of discussion. I regret that neither myself or staff was present because a review of your minutes would suggest that you took umbrage with the manner in which the Elmwood Township Planning Commission conducted its affairs on January 15, 2019. Had I been here, I would have said nothing further from the truth occurred, and I'm not here to be, you know, confrontational. But you talked a little bit about conditional rezoning, and then you went ahead and made a motion to forward your staff report and comments to the Elmwood Township Board, which, of course, is state law. You get the advisory-only review, and then it goes to the Township Board per state law and also per our zoning ordinance. But perhaps because you mentioned conditional rezoning, perhaps not, sometime between your meeting and the time that it was to go before the Township Board, applicants submitted a request to withdraw and to resubmit, which our township planner allowed to happen, and I believe that to have been in violation of state law and our zoning ordinance. I asked the township attorney for clarification of that, never really got any satisfaction. So nonetheless, what ended up happening is the applicant was able to resubmit its application. The first time was for a rezoning, the second time was for a conditional rezoning. And in our zoning ordinance, there is no such thing really as conditional rezoning. There's a rezoning with a conditional rezoning agreement. That matter went before our Township Board, I think it was on May 21st of 2019. Seven members were present. All seven members recommended unanimous denial to the Township Board, and so the matter is now currently before you for a second time. Ostensibly, the very same application, except we just called a little bit something different. Now it's being called a conditional rezoning. One change also that occurred in between the first time and the second time is that the first time, there was a, the application contained a desire on the part of the applicant to make nine boat storage buildings a condition of their rezoning application, and they withdrew that, those nine boat storage buildings a second time. When they were here before you on the 26th of February, they said they had done everything according to what they had been told by Elmwood Township Planner, Sarah Capriva, and that they did not get the impression that they would have to make a full-blown presentation at the time, and they sort of, you know, were blindsided. And it seemed like you, a review of my, my review of your minutes would suggest that you were somewhat sympathetic to that, to that reasoning at the time. However, let me ask you this. If anybody's ever served on a planning commission, or a township board, or the county board, or whatever the case may be, if you have an application for a rezoning, it's important for the applicant to make their case as to why a rezoning application should be accepted or denied. That means a full-time, full-blown presentation, the kind of presentation they apparently made to you on the 26th of February that they did not do before the Elmwood Township Planning Commission on the 15th of January. So, here we are again. The matter's come up to you for your advisory-only review under the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, and you will be making recommendations one way or another, forward your report and comments to the Township Board under state law, and as our zoning ordinance says, the next step is that it shall go to the Township Board. And in our zoning ordinance, the word "shall" is defined as "nondiscretionary," means it must occur. Didn't happen the first time. I certainly hope that it's allowed to occur this time. Reasons for recommending denial, impacts on the neighborhood. We have specific requirements in our zoning ordinance that it's supposed to be compatible with neighborhoods. Having a hotel, a hotel zone that is only allowed in general commercial under our zoning ordinance immediately adjacent to residential, generally not a good thing. Generally, it's supposed to be a buffer, and that's why they went ahead and tried to rezonate the neighborhood commercial. Rezoning the neighborhood commercial also allows them to, under our zoning ordinance, apply for a planned development, which is only allowed in neighborhood commercial, but it's not allowed in general commercial, nor is it allowed in residential. So this is, the whole purpose of this is an end run to rezone property that they can combine with property that they already own, make it one giant parcel, and then use our zoning ordinance under our planned development regulations to request that a hotel be built in a location where normally it would not be allowed. The planning commission, in their review, were very attentive to the people that spoke in opposition, and as a result, they recommended denial of the application by a vote of seven to zero, just like they had done the first time around by a vote of five to zero. And so that's basically all I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
And just to remind ourselves, the time of public comment is a time of listening, being attentive to what we're told. It's not a time to come back with questions or debate. And I'm sorry, I gave you more than five minutes. My apologies. So I'll have to let everybody else have five minutes and 32 seconds, was it? Okay. Any further public comments? Okay, thank you. Staff comments?
I just want to let you know, if you're not aware of it yet, we, you know that the meetings have always been taped, but now they're also videotaped, so audio and video. If you were here earlier and heard that beeping, it's because the system was paused. So all the meetings are being videotaped, and they will be able to be placed up onto the website after this for anyone else reviewing.
Thank you. Any further comments from staff?
I had to update on tire recycling, but I'll leave that to the end of the meeting.
Thank you. Consideration of the minutes of May 28th. As you recall, these minutes are reviewed by us. If you have a minor comments, like typographical errors, just communicate those to staff. Other than that, any comments? Yes, sir.
I do have a significant comment on page five under the report with LCPC members. Although I might have liked to attend that conference, I did not, and I think it was either Mr. Yoder or Mr. Winkelman that actually reported on that conference, and my name's in the stricken thumb, those minutes at least referencing that I might have said something.
Thank you. Any further comments? We're ready for our motion to approve the minutes as amended.
We approve the minutes as amended.
Move by McCullough, second.
Second.
Second by Winkelman, sorry.
Discussion.
You were raising for discussion. Second by Noonan. Now, discussion?
Yes, both Mr. Miller and I attended the Energy Conference in Traverse City, and my comments were part of the minutes, but his were not. They're missing.
So is that, are you proposing this?
I propose that if we approve the minutes, it be done with revisal, that Bob Miller's Energy Conference comments be added to it.
Okay, so that will be now as an amendment. And as much as the motion was seconded, we now have to proceed with an amendment. He is moving an amendment, I need a second.
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor of the amendment? Yes.
I have a comment, but after the vote on the amendment, please.
Okay. All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Okay. Now we have a motion as amended before us. Yes, no?
Clarification, please. Is the, does the motion include all of the changes recommended by staff, also the minor and significant concerns?
I don't follow you, I'm sorry.
Those were Victor's comments that he presented in writing.
Oh, those are Victor's.
Yeah, those are just minor corrections.
Oh, that little sheet there?
Yes.
No, those are typographical, as we indicated. Typographicals are just given to staff.
Okay.
And they just incorporate that.
They'll just incorporate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any further comments from the minutes? I guess we're ready to vote on the amended motion. All those in favor indicate, if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carry. Thank you very much. Now, the next thing we have, there's no unfinished business, so we move on to the next item of business, which is Elmwood Township. Staff, if you could guide us in this process, and you give us, share with us your comments, that'd be excellent.
Okay. And the sheet that Victor handed out, there's a couple comments at the bottom on that, and we will also include those in the minutes, and we'll go back to the township as well. And then, as Mr. Kelly mentioned, there was a couple handouts, so we printed those all out, did email them to you, but also printed them for you, so you had a hard copy of each one of those here to look at today. This request came to you a few months ago, and it was a rezoning request to the Neighborhood Commercial District. What we did is we went back and modified the staff report and took out anything that didn't apply to it anymore because it came back as a conditional rezoning request. So going on to page two of the staff report, which would be page nine of the agenda packet, we've inserted the Township Planning Commission's action, the motion that they made at their meeting May 21st. We've included the history of when it was reviewed at the township level, and then when it came here as a rezoning request, and your motion that was made on February 26th, and then we've included information about the actual application and what they are rezoning to. The entire application was included as part of the appendix, as well as some maps and so forth, so if you went through that, went through the minutes, you'll see that originally that conditional rezoning request included the boat storage, but then partially along the way, they pulled that out. And so with the conditional rezoning, it's the applicants who offer the conditions. By law, the municipality cannot state, this is what we want you to do. The applicants have to offer the conditions. The municipality has to accept them or not accept them. They don't, they're not required to accept what is offered. So going on to the next page, under the analysis, the questions there and the answers really didn't change from the prior staff report that you had. And then under staff comments, section seven, which is page 11 of your packet, we've once again included language from the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, and then we've also included information on conditional rezoning, that it is allowed under the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, and municipalities have the ability to include language in their zoning ordinances as to how they would accept applications and how they would deal with those. And then going on to the next page, under our staff comments, we've noted that the township has a couple sections in their ordinance dealing with this. One of them states that they're not required to accept any or all conditions offered by a developer on a rezoning application. An offer of a conditional rezoning agreement does not require the township to approve a rezoning application. And then we've noted that if it is approved, the NC district would abut those lots to the west in the Briarwood subdivision and the residential homes along East Cherry Bin Road. The applicant would be restricted to what they offered as conditions with this, plus they have to meet all the requirements in the township zoning ordinance. And then we've included a lot of documents for you that came from the township, the minutes, the application, the maps and so forth. And, let's see. I did want to point out, in their zoning ordinance, under section 5.4, there's a land use and zoning district table. There was a comment about, at the last meeting where you heard this, and then also, I believe, in their minutes, that hotels not allowed in the NC district. And so what they have in here is a chart under section 5.4, which spells out the different uses. It's not in your staff report, but it looks like that. I printed it out today just as a reference. So if you go down through the NC district and go into the commercial-related uses, number 60 says motels, and then it has a little asterisk by it, says, "See Section 5.5." And then if you go to section 5.5, under Item F, motels, it says, "In all districts except RR, the total number of rooms shall be limited to 150." So although it's not specifically listed in this table, that wording makes it sound like motel may be allowed in all districts except RR. Now, I'm not going to interpret their zoning ordinance form, that's up to them, just referencing that for you because that was brought up before that. Motels weren't actually listed in the NC district.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Now, I'll open the floor for your comments, if you have any, as you review this. McCullough? Lotner?
Also, no comment.
Hubble?
No comment.
Noonan?
No comments.
Nixon?
None at the moment.
Winkelman?
I withhold it, so I hear from the applicants that they're going to speak.
Lukamsky?
No comment.
Well, okay. I just had one comment, and it's my concern that the conditional rezoning issue be clearer, more clearly presented. Normally, conditional rezoning is accompanied by a lifetime. It has an endpoint where the conditions that allowed the rezoning may no longer be in effect, then as to revert back to the zoning that it was before. So this is something that's very important from my perspective. So that would mean, if there were to be a structure constructed under conditional rezoning, it becomes more complex. If it's a use factor for conditional rezoning, it's quite simpler. So there's a bit of an art, and we're all learning still on what conditional rezoning means. And you remember what I always say, you can be in R1, you can get a condition to rezonate in your house to be a coffee shop, and when you stop being a coffee shop, you go back to R1. So you can be rezoned to commercial just for your building and your, in your location, then it reverts. Any questions from, from the commissioners for the applicants? We'll be followed, we'll follow that after they make what comments they would like to make. I realize they are not applicants, they're present for us to give advice. I heard when I said applicants, because we are not approving anything, we're just recommending areas which probably could have been done slightly differently. So with that being the case, say a number between 1 or 2. Let me start over here. Any comment, any three-minute comments?
We get three?
Three minutes, yes.
Okay. She gets three, I get three, or three?
Come on, Chad.
Thirty-two seconds added on.
Okay. Now, I'm going to let the last one have a little bit more time.
All right. Good evening. My name is Chad Craker. I'm with Peninsula Engineering or Peninsula Construction and Design, we are the engineer on record for this project. Most of it has been laid out pretty clearly. I will start out by saying that at no point, according to some of the comments that have been made tonight, have we tried to end around or be shady with anything. We've worked with the Elmwood Township Planner, Sarah, very closely along this and have taken her direction, really, every step of the way. On February 26th, we did come before you and laid the idea for the hotel out, which included the boat storage at that time. Based on the recommendations that we got back, we did a conditional rezoning. Based on public comment that we had received, we did, in fact, remove the boat storage. By removing the boat storage, we have increased our buffer from Gene Skipski's plan, which is that R1 parcel to the west of the proposed site to 85 feet. I spoke with Gene yesterday in regards to that, so we've moved forward with that. So really, I would direct you guys, as you contemplate today, to page 21 in your E-packet, it's the page that looks like that. We think very clearly that the Grolleville Service Center, that corridor, it's designed exactly for what we're proposing. We have the same condition, we're just asking that the allotment of the NC to R1 move one lot to the west. And you'll see that it's, it's kind of designed for that NCGC area all the way through there, abutted to high-density residential. So we think that we're very much in accordance with the future plan of not only the Elmwood Township future land, but also the M22 corridor. And what I will end my comments with is, it was stated, thank you for that, but we did want to talk to you tonight a little bit about section 5.5, and that we believe that hotels, motels are allowed in all districts other than RR. So I appreciate your time and thank you for your consideration.
We believe that...
Go ahead, introduce yourself.
Julia Ford, 796 Indian Trail, Traverse City. We do believe that there are uses that are allowed in the NC that are much more impactful than what this hotel would be. There's some light manufacturing, there's veterinary, there's kennels, there's retail stores. Our, our traffic studies that we've done shows a .017 increase. That's minimal. We have offered a deed and conditional, we will not use that easement, that was the biggest concern. We have worked right along with the township. What was distressing to us after May 21st was in April, we did, working with Sarah, the planner, we did submit a PD and the conditional rezoning application, the two applications together. We did that after getting approval from the township. At the, at that meeting, the zoning commission decided that they could, they weren't sure if that was okay or not, that they would, they made a motion that they would talk to the attorney, and based on the township's attorney, they would move forward based on what the attorney said. The attorney told them that, and us, that we would need to separate it. So we went into the May 21st meeting just talking about the rezoning, the property, not the project. The commission, the planning commission then determined at that meeting that they had to talk about the project. We did not come prepared to talk about it because we were told that that's not what we were supposed to be doing. We were trying very much to abide by what the township has directed us. So we do believe that this is low impact. We have, we are not using the easement. The traffic study is minimal impact, and less impactful than other uses that are allowed, cluster residential developments, or the livestock and poultry with fenced enclosures, conservation, wind energy conservation system, routine essentials. And so we're asking for the opportunity for the conditional rezoning on the land so that we can present all of our information for the PD. That is where a final decision would be made, based on that PD, but we can't present all of that information because it's just, they're not following what they told us to do, and we're trying to abide.
Thank you. Excuse me. I think we maybe want to hear all the comments, and then we can ask questions. Would that be acceptable? Okay. Any further comments? Well, stay there then, okay. No, 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 my hand came out. And three minutes. I'm going to give you 2:50 because before I made a mistake.
Deal, Mr. Chairman. Jack Kelly, 10-100 East 7, L.A., in Traverse City, Michigan, 49684. If you, if you follow the logic of hotels may be allowed in any zoning district. I live in a residential neighborhood. That means, you've got to use reason here. The zoning ordinance may not be absolutely clear, but that means if you want to follow their line of reasoning, you can put a hotel right across the street from me in a residential neighborhood. Preposterous. You all know that, and I know that. It's an argument without an argument that can be made. The reason why they were asked, this, they have to get the rezoning to go to the PD. If they had been allowed to put together both of them at the same time, then the public would have had to have reviewed over 30 pages of zoning ordinance requirements and be expected, not only understand, but also accommodate intelligently. That's why the Township Board and the Township Attorney said, uh-uh, you're going to split these apart just like they were when they were before you on the 26th of February, when it was before the planning commission on the 15th of January. It was going to be the rezoning, then the Plan D. They lose three months, now they want to combine them. The conditional rezoning, three conditions. You can't use an easement. No planning commission, no township board would ever allow an easement from a commercial district that carries over into residential district, regardless of what the application is going to be submitted, to ever be allowed, without being subject to a condition that you can't have your commercial enterprise enter into the, into the residential neighborhood. Second condition, they were going to landscape property that abuts, commercial property that abuts residential property. Guess what? That's only, that's already required. It's already required that you have to landscape property that abuts residential. And the third condition, well, this is a big one, third condition is that it reverts back if the, if the project doesn't go forward. Well, we have a conditional rezoning agreement, and one of the things that they have to put into the conditional rezoning agreement is the fact that if the project doesn't go forward, it reverts back. So these three conditions are like worthless, and when they talk about what they're doing with the township told to do, they did what perhaps the township planner told them to do. And as a person hired to township planner, myself, and who appreciates her work as it relates to this particular project, I believe she's conflicted, and she gave them bad advice. And just because they say they did what the township said, they're not telling about the township board, they're not telling about what the Township Planning Commission told them to do, they're telling them what the township planner wanted. it reverts back. So these three conditions are like worthless. And when they talk about what they're doing, what the township told them to do, they did what perhaps the township planner told them to do. And as a person hired to township planner, myself, and who appreciates her work as it relates to this particular project, I believe she's conflicted, and she gave them bad advice. And just because they say they did what the township said, they're not telling about the township board, they're not telling about what the township planning commission told them to do, they're telling them what the township planner wanted them to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This time, I'm going to now... Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes. Tom Kraus, Kraus Realty, 1238 Garfield Avenue, Traverse City, Michigan. This is the map that was developed when Jack was on the Graylock corridor, I was on it, I went to all the meetings, I attended it. The red is called Service Center, which is more commercial development. The yellow, or the orange, is high-density residential, which we back up to. He said we offered, you have to landscape between commercial and residential, not eighty-five feet. We offered an eighty-five-foot buffer. I had serious conflicts, these two gentlemen here, chairman of the planning commission, had a meeting one week before our public hearing. We asked him to recuse himself at the meeting, based on that, we know Jack's opinion. We asked him to recuse himself from being the chairman of the planning commission, he refused. The chairman, one of the other planning commission members, they said, well, what should we do? At the meeting. She said, well, I guess the public spoke, we have to vote against it. The public opinion is only one criteria of the rezoning. We've been bending over backwards since, I've been involved in this project for six years, to make it what the township wanted. The township asked, can you get an easement, or get a right-of-way out to Cherry Ben Road? The current property owners bought another piece of property to meet that request. They said, don't rezonate, we filed an application four years ago to rezonate other property to commercial. We were asked, wait, we'll do a PD, so you can, we can come in and we can all work together and make this a good project for the neighborhood. So we didn't go forward with our rezoning, we tabled that, we came in and said, please, give us a PD. So we, Sarah has directed them every step along the way. We, the township attorney said, do not mix the two together, we've honored that, and then they asked for a presentation. So I think there were several things that were done wrong in the planning commission meeting. I think the luncheon between the two gentlemen here was inappropriate, it's, and we asked for the same privilege to meet with the planning commission members one-on-one, or the township board members one-on-one. We were told that's not, that's against township rules. We were not allowed to have that opportunity. So I think, you've got to compare apples to apples, and I think you were misled with the firm's, the previous speaker. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. At this time, normally, anymore? Thank you. Normally, we are supposed to ask questions through the chair, and I'm going to not follow that rule, if you don't mind. I'm going to let each one of you bring any concerns up, if you can do it in a way of, a way that helps guide, guiding the, to help to guide the township, planning commission, and township board, it'd be helpful. I think staff has done a tremendous job, so let's keep that in mind, too. So I'm going to just start with you, McCullough. Have you have any questions or comments before we formalize to transfer these comments to the township board?
I'll reserve any questions till later, okay?
Okay. Lautner?
I'm not exactly sure, because this is a relatively new seat for me, how far we can go and what we can do. But I guess my concern is looking at the entire map, is, I look at this project basically as being off West Bay Shore Road. That's a big highway right there. There does happen to be a residential right behind it, but also Cherry Ben is quite a bit commercial already. So, it just, yeah, it just seems to me that it would fit. It seems like a logical fit to me. And does it meet the zoning? It appears to me like it does, but I don't know how to go. That's all my comments for now.
Thank you. Chubel?
I don't have any comments with this.
Noonan?
I too myself, after, looking over everything, it seems like it is a good fit. But also, when you're asking for conditional rezoning or rezoning, it becomes a very slippery slope, or it becomes very complicated. And I sit on the zoning board of appeals for Empire Township, and we deal with this, these issues not often, but sometimes, and you have to make sure that there is a very good case stated for the conditional rezoning, or any rezoning.
Thank you. Nixon?
I was troubled at the last meeting, and I'm troubled at this meeting, that you can't underscore the frustrations that are created when poor communications take place, or impressions are given that are not understood, discussions are held that people don't realize are important or not important. This project, I can't comment on the merits of whether it's the right thing or the wrong thing to do, because that's not our purpose. Your township is the responsible party. When I listen to the confusion and the conflict in presentations that have come before this commission, I would only encourage you as a body to go back and seek the truth. What procedures do you have in place, and does all parties, do all parties understand how those procedures are to follow, be followed? It's almost suggesting you go back to base one and begin to look in your zoning ordinance, and understand when we speak, when we don't speak, what we do speak about, and what we don't speak about, what's permitted and what's not permitted. Sitting here as an objective person, the two presentations we've had over the last few months, for me, have been disturbing, because it seems to me there's an enormous amount of disconnect in your township, and with that comes poor credibility, frustration, and nothing good. That may be enough for me to say. I would make one comment. If, I don't know if the ordinance has language in there, but when projects, whether they're conditionally rezoned or not, are approved, there needs to be a timeline, I think, when that project should begin, or there's evidence that that project's beginning. Perhaps their ordinance does contain such language, I didn't see it, but I think if it doesn't, it would be wise to recommend that there's at least a period of time allowed before construction, and then no evidence of any construction, then the project should be dissolved. Those are my comments.
Thank you. One coming on?
I guess from an aesthetic viewpoint, that I saw this here, the elevation picture of what this facility is going to look like, I found would be disappointing. It's very plain, doesn't have any real style to it, and I'm just wondering if that's in keeping with what the township wants, if they decide to pass this, is that the aesthetic presentation that should be presented? For all the time and effort that's gone into this, to present such a plain envelope rendition of what would be developed, I find that to be disappointing.
Thank you. Lukowski?
No comments at this moment.
And finally, you?
I guess reviewing the project, detail by detail, going over all the minutes and everything like that, I mean, just looking at the project, the zoning in itself, I, you know, I was a little conflicted, I mean, I can't speak to the merits as to whether it's allowed or not, you know, but I guess just looking at, from my point of view, you know, sitting on the planning commission of our local township, you know, I, knowing where this is put in, and where it's proposed to be put in and stuff, I felt like it fit in, you know, but I'm not, that's just me looking at it, you know, I'm not here to say that it's, that it does or not, you know, but I do find it really concerning, I guess, going along with what Nixon said, a lot of the confusion that's coming out of there, I do find that very disturbing, and I hope that that can get cleared up, I guess.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments?
I have only one further comment, when I was saying that it appeared to fit. Of course, this would be long before zoning, but as I understood that my grandparents or great-grandparents actually ran a boarding house right behind what is now that church there on that corner. That would have been, I think, 1863, but it was a boarding house, I understand it was a pretty big boarding house. So, maybe the use is, of course, there was no car transportation, and they all came in on boat, but it was a boarding house there, at one time.
McCullough? My comment is, it seems to me that the zoning commission and the planning commission could get together and get their objectives in line, so that the poor people that are trying to make the presentation could do a clear, succinct presentation that would be satisfactory to everyone. As long as they're separated, they'll be going back and forth forever, becoming to us and saying, hey, they said this, and we did it, and then they get over here and they said, well, that's not right, so we've got to modify it, and you'll never get anything done. That's just a comment about how I see what's happening in Elmwood Township.
Thank you.
I do have a comment.
Sorry?
I have a comment, also.
Lukowski?
I also have a comment. My comment is that, as I understood it, that there was supposed to be the commercial strip along West Bay, and that was to go from the Norris School all the way to the, to the mobile gas terminal yard. It was supposed to be along the West Bay road, and now it seems like it's starting to creep. It's going to be not as narrow, and it's going into the residential area, and that is a residential area, and has small, affordable homes there, and that are well-established, and I find that that kind of creep is disturbing.
Thank you.
Person who has already opted to live in that community should be able to be prevented from having to deal with commercial creep coming into their neighborhood.
I believe the staff has made it quite clear, that maybe the interpretation of what is allowable and not allowable in a certain district may have had some confusion with having a hospital there. So I hope that they take heed to a staff report, and also sense some procedural issues that, from my perspective, were a little bit fuzzy, and some of those were underscored by one of the, by the presenter, and I think that has to be taken into account, too. But the biggest issue, I believe, was brought up by Mr. Nixon, and this is something that we all should to take heed. Communication is essential. Being inconsistent with a zoning enabling act, it should be a given, but in this case, I agree with your comments, and I'm very pleased to see they express them so clearly and succinctly, so I don't want to add anything to muddle it up. Okay. My comments was, as it's on the sheet that's here, so I read them, so they're no surprises. Usually, the chair does not comment, usually the chair does not vote first. Not, never does a chair vote first. But at this time, I always share my comments to staff, and most of the time, we don't even talk about them. But the approval of conditional rezoning should indicate its lifetime, as the basic issue is that if the proposed conditions, even the most insignificant one, are not upheld, the whole thing reverts to the original district. Basically, then, if approved, and the tail stops to operate, it might even have to be turned down, to abide with the underlying zoning restrictions. I trust that you study carefully what conditional rezoning means. You're not the only ones who are confused. I was confused for quite a few years, until finally, I went through a certificate, became a certified zoning administrator, and I finally understood what it means. And this is, this may not be the shoe that will be fitting your objectives. So that is my perspective. I'd like staff to give the final words, and then we move on to a motion, that will be to refer these comments to the township board.
Well, this came through first as a rezoning application, as I stated earlier, and then it was modified to a conditional rezoning. One of the things I want to make clear is, the county planning commission did not, at their meeting, recommend that this be conditional rezoning. There was some discussion about it, and it questions, did they ever consider a conditional rezoning, but it was not a recommendation from this body to the township or to the applicant that they go through conditional rezoning. That's, that was their own decision to try that route. There was also, and Jack and I will probably disagree on this section, the part about the township, or excuse me, the applicant withdrawing and stating that they wanted to change it to conditional rezoning, my understanding in all the years I've served here and everything we've followed, is that the applicant puts the application forward, pays the fee, it's their application, they have a right to withdraw it if they feel like it, if they, if they decide, you know what, I don't, we don't want to go in that direction, we've heard something at the public hearing, or gotten feedback, we want to modify it. That's what we've always followed through our department, is that the applicant does have that right to pull that back, or even totally withdraw, and say, we're not going to go through with this. That's just my comment, and something that was stated earlier. So, if there's this much confusion, perhaps what the township needs to do is go back and look at that section on conditional rezoning and rezoning, and anything else that fits in there, and make sure it fits, because maybe it's not fitting properly, and that's where there's confusion, and they might need to clean that up a little bit.
Thank you. At this time, I'll entertain our usual motion, we will not act on it after a second, because I said I would allow the visitor to say some words if they decide to say them. So, the usual motion, if you, if someone of you decides to make it, please.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I move that we forward the staff report, minutes and all comments to Elmwood Township Board, and also the Elmwood Township Planning Commission regarding that we are not in favor, or we're in favor or not in favor of rezoning. That's up to them, but we should forward our comments to them, so that they can proceed.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Any voices you want to make before we act on this motion? It's a procedural motion, nothing controversial, but I still want to honor the idea of you having that word. Yes. Now, you only get one minute.
Reverend Bactole, 12886 Seltsun Creek Drive, Traverse City, Michigan. I just wanted to clarify in the record that I disclosed at the beginning of our meeting that Jack Kelly and I had lunch. We talked about the Coast Guard, my son's in the U.S. Coast Guard Reserves, and I was picking Jack's brain on what would be a good advancement path for my son as a reservist, and Jack gave me that information. We talked about a camper that Jack recently purchased.
A point of order. We're just, you'll have comments at the end, public comments.
But this refers to earlier, where they asked me to recuse myself, and if you would look at our minutes of May 21st, 2019, there was no direct request for recusal, there was one comment made by Ms. Beers regarding the fact that Jack and I had lunch. We did not talk about this topic, and I just wanted to get that on the record. Thank you.
I appreciate your frustration. At this time, though, we're only discussing the motion. There being no more comments, so those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Motion passed. Visitors, please stay with us. We like to see you there. All right. General, no, maybe we should leave. We are in the process of reviewing the general plan, and now we're going to be look at some of the chapters in the general plan. So, at this time, I pass it to staff, and I have nothing in the overhead for the audience. So while you're talking, if you don't mind, I'm going to give them copies.
We are getting there. We have chapters six, seven, eight, and 10 that were delivered to you, chapter nine and a couple of the remaining chapters. We're waiting for some input from some other agencies. The chapter on transportation has been sent over to the road commission. This is the second time I sent it over, and I'm hoping that we get some input back from someone at the road commission on that chapter. So we have updated photos, we have updated maps, there have been a couple maps that we ended up removing from these sections. I want to point out, in chapter six, on the bottom where it says page 6-11, you'll see a map, it's map 6-9 on new residential construction from 2002, 2002 through 2006, and we've got a note on here that we're going to do two of these maps in here. We're getting the information from construction codes, and then we have to map it so that you'll be able to see the difference in the years. We're going to try to break these out a little bit more and bring them up, hopefully through 2018, so you can see where the development is occurring in the county. I think those are important maps to include in the plan. And then there's another one on page 8-5. We have duplicate maps there, so I just wanted to point that out to you, is that we need to make that correction as well. So you can see that some of these maps have been updated, we went through and cleaned up a lot of information, we did scale down the action statements at the end of many of these chapters, we removed some of these that no longer apply, and then tried to condense some of them. And then we updated some of our populations, population information, and we're looking for any other comments anyone might have on these. We're trying to get this final document ready so that we can ask the county board to release it for public review, and then after that, whatever review, when comments we get in, we bring back to you, and then we'll see if we're ready for adoption.
Thank you. Just, just for the sta, for the visitors who are trying to follow this, the general plan is to be reviewed every five years, and staff, at this time, we, we saw nothing really bad with existing general plan, so staff is doing superb job in cleaning it up. So we're not voting on changes or anything like that, we're just reviewing it, and the final vote will be when it's all contested at one time. So, any comments on chap, on these pages here, 6-1 through 6-16?
Did everybody get my comments, which I emailed when Eric Johnson?
No, please, please speak it for the, for the record.
Question was, if everybody got my comments, which I emailed, I wasn't sure I'd be here for this part of the meeting. The reason for these comments is based upon a conference which I attended last week on Eric Johnston was there, who I think serves both Benzie and Leland County and the Health Department with respect to these areas.
In terms of mental.
So, I think it's important that we as Leland County, the entire county, have an ordinance in there that every five years, you got to get pumped, meaning your septic tanks got to get pumped, and inspected upon exchange of the property, because some of the pictures he showed were like, it's almost like going back to the Dark Ages, what some people had done with respect to dealing with the liquid waste from the residents. So that's why my comments are in there.
Thank you. Nixon, any comments on that chapter six?
None.
Noonan? Hubble?
No.
Naughtner?
Which chapter are you on?
Six.
Six? I'm, I'm good.
Any comments there, McCullough?
Well, I, yeah, I do have one comment. I, I hate to see people burdened with a mandate by the county to have a septic inspection or a pump every five years. I just have, I have a 1,500 gallon tank and an 1,800 gallon tank, and I had Hodick come out, and he said, what am I doing here? I said, you're pumping it out. He said, it doesn't need to be pumped. He said, it's 15 years old, he said, you can go another 15 years. Why do we mandate, when people have put in good systems that work wonderfully, that they have it pumped unless there's a need to have it pumped?
If you...
I, I just don't understand that, that thinking, and to have a mandatory inspection at the cost of probably $1,000, there's a lot of people that couldn't, couldn't stand that cost every five years. So I'm opposed to that.
But if either of you have alternative wording to propose, that'd be fine. We can, we can end up, if necessary, we can end up with two different statements, and then we vote formally after, after that.
I would suggest that, Mr. McCullough has made some fair comments, and therefore, an ordinance should take into consideration people who have modern tanks and modern septic fields in terms of their functioning properly, but at the same time, there's a lot of people who don't. So we need something to protect the public and adjacent property owners from people who don't pump out, who have systems that are 50, 60 years old, they're antiquated, they're homebrewed, and it's not good health. A lot of soils in Leland County are sandy.
I appreciate that.
And stuff can move anywhere that wants to in subsurface sandy soils. So I think there's a point where you and I could come to an agreement in terms of creating some flexibility.
Yeah, I, I, please do that. Bring it up. We, we're not, we're not sowing the thing up yet, but at this time, I would welcome a comment, the, I don't want to imply emotion, but how can we tell you, great job, keep on going?
Just go to chapter seven.
What?
Move on to chapter seven.
Okay. So, great job, keep on going. Lead us, you're on.
I didn't have anything else on chapter seven, other than to say that it has been submitted to the county road commission. There's some new employees there, so maybe this time around, we might get someone to review this chapter and give us some input, because there's some, there's some sections in here that I want to make sure that we have accurate and up to date, and if they have new information, we'd certainly like it to put in here.
Are they going to have the opportunity to review that part, this plan that refers to them and provide input? Did I understand that correctly?
I'm sorry?
Are you going to submit the proposed revision to the area of this chapter, refers to the county road commission?
Already did.
Already did?
Twice.
Okay, did you get any feedback?
No. I'm waiting.
All right, then I will not make any further comments, then.
I talked to him personally, and I haven't said anything either.
Naughtner?
Yes, that being said, they do have a brand-new employee spending a seat a month, maybe, so we might just maybe help him walk through it, or, or give him a little bit of time.
We, we are moving now at a pace that we have to keep up. We have to read this before we come here, because this is the time that we would have proposed, I'd like to change this. Remember when Jessica said, I'd like to deform it to be different? Staff did it right away, and, because we are going to resolve this before the end of the year, for sure.
I'll, I'll give them like another week or so, and then give a phone call over there and see if they've got some time to review it.
Yeah.
I think that would be fair. This is going to be all new for them, and, and I think that they, I would like their input. If we have to wait a little while for it, I'd like their input.
Do you have a question specifically that, do we have more time?
If need be, but I, I like the idea of giving them another week and then following up.
Okay. Well, come equipped, because next meeting, we're going to have more chapters. Okay?
Mr. Chairman?
Chapter eight?
Let me say, I'd like to comment on seven. It's, it's astounding to me that over half the people, or nearly half the people, in Leland County travel outside of the county for employment. That's incredible. But having been around the state, almost in every county, there's 83 of them, I think that Leland County, as far as the roads are concerned, I think we have the best-maintained roads in the summer and the wintertime of any county I've ever been in, so I think the road commission is to be complimented.
I second the idea.
Thank you.
Not a motion, just an idea.
Thank you, Eric.
As someone who'd had a business on 8th Street in Traverse City, I do backflips for the idea.
Maybe, maybe, maybe we can include available words there that, oh, our county, our county highway department, or whatever we call them, I think we had a great job.
Well, the questionnaire does back that up as well, that information is included here. Eighty percent of respondents felt the county roads were well-maintained.
Yeah.
In that questionnaire, we did.
Thank you.
They are.
And chapter eight? Yes, sir?
The only, having read this and having been around the county, if I were a fudgy looking for a place to go to the bathroom, there's many places in this county that there are no public facilities, and I think that we should keep an eye on that and encourage the townships and villages to have a public restroom for people.
I appreciate that. Again, I'm being redundant. Let's try to come with specific proposals, recommendations. On page 8-6, I'd like to add these words, and then we can put your great ideas into, into work. Yes, Nixon?
On page 8-2, just a typo, just go up, terrific maps, by the way, it's impressive to see those.
Gail just done those. Gail did those.
Pardon?
Gail did those. New training.
Need to see those so timely, but the third line up from the bottom, you've got a C.A. there that probably should, that's all. Trying to fly spec this, and boy, I can't find errors, and there you are, so you guys have done an enormously good job.
Ready for chapter 10?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Who?
Keep going, yes, there was a yes.
Oh, thank you. Chapter, chapter 10.
Please.
We need to make note cards.
Yes, we're, we're going to.
What was conspicuous by its absence was, there's no mention of grapes, wine creation, and numerous wine tasting rooms throughout the county, we're also in the process of learning how to distill brew, I mean, brew beer, distilling vodka, growing hops. These are additional agricultural supplements that are having an impact, not only in terms of helping people make money from agriculture, but it has an impact on tourism as well, I think needs to be mentioned.
Okay, we all have our homework assignment. For the next meeting, let's come with specific work changes you'd like to see in six, eight, six, seven, eight, and 10. Okay?
Can I say one right now?
Sure.
On page 10-1, the picture of downtown Leland, we have one that's a little bit more current than in soldier. It's been a while since it's been.
I think that's a pretty nice picture.
Go get a new one.
Thank you.
Staff, both of you, thank you for all the work you've done. I think we're converging. We have, generally, we have consensus on all of this, maybe something on the format. And I'm glad that you're abbreviating things. I no longer hear Mark Wyckoff at every page I turn. Mark Wyckoff was a professor at Michigan State that had one of the original drafts long ago, and, okay. Moving on along, are we up to date now here, together? Are we together? Okay, great. Education committee, your order?
We had a meeting earlier today, just before this meeting, and we did the CIP update. We had seven projects that were proposed that we ranked and rated, we gave them to staff, they were going to work on them, and hopefully have them before the full commission here for the August meeting, once they get everything crafted together and, and fixed together to make it simple for us all to review, so. And then, as far as the fall session, we unanimously pretty much decided we're not going to do a fall session. We had the obvious spring session, which had to do with the marijuana, we had around 50 people attend for that, and then we had the planning and zoning essentials training here earlier this month that we had around 50 people attend to, so that was a very worthwhile training. I know I received comments from Elmwood Township of members wondering how we did it that cheap, so it was definitely well-received, well-attended and everything, so with those two trainings, we felt like that was enough, staff's busy enough, so we're going to hopefully get something together and have a good training in the springs of time, so.
Hubble?
I'd just like to congratulate the education committee on the excellent presentation I heard they made for the last education committee. I would, as a member of our township zoning board, I think it might be helpful if we revisited that every, I'm not, you know, every four years or something like that, because there is turnover on the planning commissions, and that sort of basic education, I think, was well-received, well-done, and deserves some repeat. Again, I'm not hung up on four years or two years or whatever, but I just think it's, it was really helpful for the people I heard that went to it, to get a good base of what their responsibilities were.
And just to piggyback off of that, we did, I mean, some of the comments we've been receiving was those exact same comments, you know, to have it, having something yearly like that was just...
I don't know if this needs to be yearly, but...
And this local, you know, was very beneficial, so, you know, maybe it's, once a year, we'll do a different type of training or something, you know, maybe not always planning and zoning, but maybe it's something, something else, so that's something we'll, we'll have to look at, just to see.
Well, as I said, I don't know if it's worth doing every year, planning and zoning, but I think planning and zoning, I know our township is starting to implement a formalized requirement for our planning and zoning people to educate themselves and to bring themselves up to speed, because even though we are the most rural of the townships, everything's getting pretty complicated.
Right.
So, congratulations, thank you.
If, you probably realize it, what you heard would get points towards a master citizen planning certificate, and I think we should encourage all township planning commissions and ourselves to complete that program. We will find many things that are problems to us now, there will be, had been simple solutions. Okay, thank you. And anything else, any other comments for the education committee? General plan?
We just covered it.
We did, indeed. Any comments for, for the chairman?
I would like to say this, I'd like to compliment Trudy and her staff on the fine job they've done, because it's excellent. Yes. And it's a lot of hard work and a lot of time and effort, so.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
And, and the ultimate product is, we're, we're really getting there.
We're getting where we want to be, yeah.
Heritage Road, Wacamski.
Nothing to report.
Housing Action, Naughtner.
I, I personally cannot comment on the group that's been going out to township to township speaking on this, because I haven't attended any of those meetings. I guess they've been well-received, but I will speak just briefly, as I know you saw the, the email that Trudy forwarded to you, and I hope you had a chance to read it, I'm speaking about Chariland Electrics partnership with Habitat for Humanity. So it's three-year commitment, $100,000 a year for three years, and it will, it will help with low-income homes that need weatherization improvements, both in mobile homes or stick built, and not necessarily a member of Chariland Electrics, they can live off of our lines, but we're really excited about, about the opportunity. We've been working a long time to try to figure out the right kind of partnership, and, and so we're really excited about the opportunity we have with this one, and we'll begin, 2020 will be when the repairs begin, so.
Thank you. Just for our visitor to realize, the housing action committee was appointed by the planning commission, directed by the board, so they have a sort of interesting line of command there. Staff, through Gala, is doing an excellent job in guiding that committee. Trudy, you have a patience that is beyond understanding, so we're very blessed with you. Parks and Recreation.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, could I just tag on to a little bit of what?
Please do. Yes.
That, that program is awesome. I'm so glad to see that, because there's a lot of need for rehab in this region. Housing Action Committee... Housing Action Committee, one of the things that they're really proud of is they've been working on this checklist that they're taking up to communities to use in reviewing their plans and their, and their zoning ordinance and other documents and so forth. And the regional group, Housing North, has asked for that, because they've gotten requests from many other counties wanting to know, "What is Leland County doing? Can we, can we get that?" So it's got a logo on it now for Leland County, it's got, you know, the label that it came from the Housing Action Committee, and it's being shared. And then members of the Housing Action Committee have also been invited to be part of the Housing Summit in the fall in Traverse City and talk about what they've been doing and some successes. So I think that's really good, that they've, they've accomplished quite a bit.
Thank you. Your chair also sits there as ex-official, and the committee that we appointed to begin with has had many numbers, many people. It has been reduced to a very muscular, skinnier committee. How does that sound? Were there any new appointments to it that we should be affirming?
No.
Okay. Nunnan?
Parks and Rec, we met last week. Things are going pretty smooth. We are now underway in the process of updating our five-year plan. We contracted with Gosling Zubac to help us with that, and they were at our last meeting and took about an hour with us and gave us some homework to do, and move forward, moving forward with that, hoping to have it obviously completed by the end of the year. And it seems like we're off to a good start. And that was the most major thing. Parks are looking really great. We did have a water line break at Miles Kimmerly, that was an issue, but it's been fixed. And this weekend, Sunday, from 11:00 to 3:00 at Brown Valley is Kids Fishing Day, probably the biggest event held in many of our parks, really great event, and given young children or grandkids, it's a great event.
Is this Sunday?
Yep.
Thank you. Any questions for Parks and Recs? Okay, next we have...
Who's here?
Gulp? Communications Committee needs communication. All right. I'd use the time for that by simply asking a question, including them over there. How many of our townships have a CIP, Capital Improvement Plan? You do one?
Yes.
Okay. Good. Point for you. The rest of us, let's get our little townships to realize it's mandated. Okay. Report on attendance at other locations, or townships, or boards, or training sessions, starting with Yoder?
Nothing to report.
Lakumski?
I require it, but there's nothing.
Nixon? Nunnan?
Last week, we did Empire Township Zoning Board of Appeals, did have a meeting, had a zoning variance request. We don't, obviously don't meet very often, it's the first time in a couple of years, but after very careful consideration and proof of some hardships, we did grant them a variance for a garage to be constructed within the area from the road.
Thank you. Hubbell?
As I said, the Township Board has begun to outline a educational requirements, a continued education requirements with the Township Planning Commission. You know, it's just about done. Because we're just starting it, there's not a lot of structure in terms of, you know, what specific education requirements are there, but I think we're getting there. I also would comment on the CIP. I don't know that we have a formal CIP, but we just remodeled the Township Hall to make it winterized.
Nothing left to CIP with.
Yeah, and, but we also have developed a program to work with the County Road Commission on helping fund road conditions within the township, which really are our structural requirements, the township, the township building, and the roads are the two biggest things we have to address.
Thank you. Naughtner, visits?
I've been attending the Soul and Township meetings, or their meetings, or their Planning Commission meetings, but I can, they have a few interesting little things going on down there, but nothing really to report, they're working their way through them.
The way you say that makes us all very curious.
Yeah.
What's a, what's a little interesting?
Yeah.
McCullough? I forgot we had visitors. McCullough? Okay. I have been in Uruguay, okay? And when I returned, my email was overwhelming, so I'm still in a catch-up mode. All right, communications. Staff?
We had planning and zoning news, if you picked those up? They're up here at the top of the table.
Thank you. Public comments?
Jack Kelly, 10-100, St. Alene, Charleston, Michigan, 49684. Before I moved to northwest Michigan 16 years ago, I spent 20 years in the Coast Guard as a retired, retired as a lieutenant commander. When I moved here 16 years ago, I spent five years in Calcasas County as a zoning administrator and their planner. Thereafter, I spent eight years as the Township Supervisor. While I was working in Calcasas County, I was chairman of the Planning Commission. I served on the Planning Commission for two and a half years. I have a reputation, well-earned and well-protected. I can assure you, Mr. Beck told, four years as the Planning Commission Chair, eight years on the Planning Commission, you don't have to worry, you don't have to worry, I don't have to worry about knowing what's right, what's wrong, what's ethical, what's not ethical. If you really want to get a feel for what's happening in Elwin Township, I would encourage you, unlike your meetings, which are available on the internet or on your website, ours are televised, and they're available on the internet at any given point in time. If you want to watch the proceedings of actually what happened, you've got two different versions of what happened, I would encourage you to take a look at the January 15th, 2019 Planning Commission meeting, and the May 21st, 2019 Planning Commission meeting. I'm here to tell you that the state of affairs in Elwin Township is a lot better than you seem to think it is. I retired two and a half years ago, remained an active Coast Guard, not Coast Guard, but active in community affairs. This one particular project, it just happens to be one of those that I don't like and which I don't feel it fits. Just because someone proposes a given development doesn't mean that it should be approved. As you know, the burden to prove compliance with the zoning ordinance and the master plan is on the applicant, it's not on the residents. On January 15th of 2019, when this went before the Planning Commission, 11 residents, including myself, spoke in opposition, not one spoke in support. On April 20, May 21st, when I went before the Planning Commission a second time, eight residents spoke in opposition, including myself, not one spoke in support. The vote in January was five to zero from the Planning Commission. The vote in May was seven to zero from the Planning Commission. Draw your own conclusions, but seriously, if you think that there's anything that's kind of a mess in Elwin Township, I would encourage you to take a look at, at us on TV and see for yourself how the Planning Commission conducts its affairs. I'm very proud of the way that they do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Actually, I heard 7960, Indian Trail, Traverse City. I just wanted to acknowledge the, the way that you function as a board, because regardless whether it's us as an applicant or somebody else, we have obviously been in the middle of confusion, and both times, when we came in February and we came tonight, you conducted yourselves unbiased and professional, and I just want to personally thank you for that, because that's the best thing that an applicant can expect.
Thank you. Any other further public comments? Next, we're in Agenda Staff Comments.
Quick update on the tire recycling for you from June 15th, when everything was done and all downstate, we got the manifest back, and we had 996 tires. So that was great. We are shooting for two trailers next time, which will be September 14th collection. We have enough grant money for both of those, and we could possibly even have enough grant money for a third collection, but I'm hoping that we get two trailers this next time. And we also did the household space electronics collection on Saturday. Gail was there from beginning to end, and I popped in for a little bit in between there, and then stayed around at the end to make sure everything was picked up. If you haven't ever seen those big semis leave with all of that stuff, it's really amazing. And they started those engines up and just semi after semi, leaving that parking lot of Glen Lake School with all their stuff. That was really something. So they did, they do a nice job for us, they always do, they kept everything clean, and they really like working up here in Leland County, because we are one of the few communities that take reservations. Most of them don't, you just go and you stay in line for however long it takes you, and they never know how many people are going to show up. But with us, we not only take the reservations, but we give them updated numbers as we get closer and closer to the collection, so they know how many people to bring up here as well, and how many trucks, and it works out great. So next collection for tires is September 14th, and that will be right here at the Government Center. So if you know anybody needs to still get rid of tires, let us know.
Thank you. Commissioner, your comments? McCullough?
Last month, I thanked the Planning Commission for, for taking the ball and running with the tire collection, and I just need to thank them again, because, you know, if I'd have brought four more tires, then we could have hit 1,000 tires, and that's fantastic. There's 1,000 tires that are out of this county, not breeding mosquitoes, whatever, it's fantastic. So we look forward to September. But I gotta say, that there were little girls throwing these tires up in those semi-trailers, so I'm hoping some, maybe burly football players might step forward for September if there's two trailers.
She's talking about Hubbell, you realize, not Goldschmidt.
They, they actually liked the collection better than HHW collection, they said.
Really? And these tires were, it was a muddy mess, they were dirty tires, but head talk to those little girls.
Thank you. Hubbell?
No comment.
Nunnan? Nixon? Winkerman?
Sir, what is your name again? You, yes.
Jack Kelly.
Okay, I know you've had a lot of experience, but my limited experience is, is all we can do is recommend to the townships and villages. We have no authority, the final sovereignty, as you know, rests with them. Appreciate your comments, I appreciate your credentials. You want a job?
Maybe shoot me. It was a part-time, you wouldn't get any pay. All right, that's my call.
Lakumski?
No comment.
Yoder?
No comment.
I want to thank the visitors. We are so delighted you stayed in until the end, but I, I'm sorry, we don't go to village in, in, for party now, we just go home to our wives or husbands or friends. I want to particularly thank Staff. You don't cease to amaze me, Trudy. You still have a family, don't you?
I hope so.
And I want to thank each one of you, even Winkerman, you were not too bad today.
We get kind of an ongoing hidden conflict, I guess.
Well, with this, a lot of applause to all. We're adjourned.